Okay, I would like to call the January fourteenth twenty twenty-one meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission to order.
So, Mr. Vice Chair, the next step is to ask for roll call.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a roll call.
Oh.
And can you allow?
Okay, so Jason Dale.
Roll call.
Jason Dale. Robert Sherry.
Here.
Charles Aben.
Here.
Gina Morris.
Here.
Chris Wright.
Here.
Sharon Capri. And Jeffrey Musall.
Here.
Colin Bullock.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to public comments. Anyone wish to make a comment? Please do so at this time. Hearing no comments, we'll go ahead and move on, and I believe the next step is the consent calendar. Where we need to.
Mr. Chair, could I interrupt for just a moment? We, we have a new planning commission member with us tonight, so now that we've done roll call and the public comment.
Okay.
So, Charles, welcome aboard. He is replacing Robert Fickers seat. And so, Charles and I went through orientation earlier. I gave him the huge notebook and he looked at it and said, oh. So, he has now joined the cadre of people who've gotten the large planning commission notebook. So, we went through the orientation, so he's aware. So, Charles, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, I've been, my name's Charles. I graduated from George Fox University with both my MBA and my undergrad. I've been living in Newburgh for seven years and I'm excited to learn about government and how, how some of these decisions are made.
Yeah. Welcome aboard, Charles.
So, Mr. Vice Chair, so maybe might just a kind of a brief introduction from each of you might help Charles get a little bit more oriented.
Yeah, absolutely, Charles, and I'll start off. I'm named Jeffrey Musall and moved to Newburgh when we're moving out of an apartment up in the Hillsborough area and wanted to find a place to live to raise our son, who's now thirteen, so been here that long. And I'm happy to call it home and I'm currently in my office in Tigard. I'm trying, I'm trying to do as limited amount of multitasking as I can this evening. Because on the meeting, but, but that's me, married and one son and like living in Newburgh. Anyone next? Who's next?
No, Chris, go ahead.
Okay. I am Commissioner Chris Wright with a K double S. I went to Portland State University for way too many years, I think twelve altogether. I've been coming in to Newburgh with my father since I was a teenager, building and hod carrying along with the rest of them. Lessons learned. That's why I did the, I guess, school that I did, so I didn't have to be a hog carrier. But I've been enjoying Newburgh almost all my life on, off and on, and I, I really love it and I'm glad to be a part of the planning commission.
All right, who wants to go next?
Well, I'll go next. I'm Bob Sherry. I'm actually joined the commission in June, I think it was, after I retired. And I've spent the last forty-seven years doing nothing but development. So, I'm, you know, I'm excited to be a member of the commission. And we've, we've lived here in Newburgh now for fourteen years, so.
All right.
And then I can go. I'm Jenna Morris. I've been living in Newburgh, I think this is year four. I lived in Eugene before this for school. And yeah, I work up in Walton at a winery and then also work part-time at George Fox as the little cross coach there. So, yeah, I love Newburgh, big place in my heart.
Okay. Moving on.
I believe I'm the last one. I'm Colin Bullock. I am the student planning commissioner here, attending Newburgh High School. I graduate in June and like you, I joined the commission in order to get a better understanding of what goes on around here.
Well, that's good. Thanks to everyone and, and welcome aboard, Charles.
So, Mr. Vice Chair, we're now on to the consent agenda.
Okay. So, at this time, would anyone like to offer a motion as to accepting consent? From last month's meeting?
Yes, Planning Commissioner Wright moves to approve Planning Commission minutes of twelve ten of twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. Can we take a vote?
Essentially, all those in favor say aye.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
During the opposition, the motion passes. Okay, moving on. Next, we have a resolution recommending city council amend the twenty sixteen transportation system plan, incorporating the twenty twenty-one riverfront addendum into the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and amending Newburgh Municipal Code Title fifteen, fifteen dot zero five zero dot zero three zero.
Mr. Chair, are we to do? Considering all the planning commissioners are not present, are we still doing our electoral election of chair and vice chair?
Yes.
Doug, go ahead. About that, have we done that first? Okay.
Yeah, let's do that first.
Okay. Before we get to that, then, okay, we're going to discuss.
Because you're really become department chair.
Yeah, so, so we need to discuss that, an election for chair and vice chair for the upcoming period. And I apologize, I'm not sure of the format on there, maybe Doug can help me out. Do I need to ask for nominations or?
Yeah, so the, the past protocol has been, and it's not in writing, is the chair and the vice chair position rotate. Often, it's based upon seniority, how long you've been on the commission and other members can make nominations. So, at this point in time, you would open it up for nominations for the chair position.
At this point, yeah, I'd like to open up the floor to nominations for the chair position. Any nominations?
Well, Sharon Capri would be next in line after you, but she's not here. Can we nominate her? Oh, she'd love that. Did she pass last time or? I think it's, was between you and her as far as seniority. You both.
Yeah, I believe she was just under myself as far as seniority. Yeah, right after me. Yeah, we were fairly close together, if I remember right.
Yeah, you both are, it looks like you both were sworn in on twelve thirty-one eighteen, is that correct?
So, we have the same seniority. Yeah, yeah, that's correct for me, I know.
Okay. Yeah, and since Sharon's not here, then it would, I guess, fall to me. And, yeah. I have a lot going on this year with my father, so Jenna would actually be in line next, I do believe. Are you up to it, Jenna?
I also would nominate Robert. You always ask the best questions, so I would also nominate you as well.
Yes.
I haven't been sworn in yet.
Well, it's a little difficult, Robert, we've been virtual lately, so that particular protocol, though not required, may go by the wayside for you and Charles.
It'd be nice when we finally have a meeting in person to meet you.
Yeah.
I love it. So, yes, I would nominate for chair Jeffrey Musall, Planning Commissioner Wright. And for a vice chair, I would nominate Robert Sherry.
Are there any seconds?
I second that.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none. Okay, then. Jeez, if we only have one nomination for each, do we really need to do a vote?
Yes, we do. So, you would first vote on the chair and then you would vote on the vice chair.
Okay. Okay, at this time, let's go ahead and vote for the chair. And will we do a roll call vote or a voice vote?
Let's do a roll call.
Okay, can we do the, go ahead and do the roll call vote?
That will be Bobby.
This was for chair. Okay, for the chair, Charles Aben.
Yes.
Yes. Robert Sherry.
Yes.
Gina Morris.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
And Jeffrey Musall.
Yes.
Did I get everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so. When a vote on vice.
Yeah, now we vote on the vice chair.
Yeah, so the motion passed on the chair, so now we do the vice chair.
Okay.
Okay, Robert Sherry.
Yes.
Charles Aben.
Yes.
Gina Morris.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
And Jeffrey Musall.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that. So, Mr. Chair, let's go back to the legislative hearing and so, again, I think just make a statement that the fact that you are calling the hearing to order.
Absolutely, and first, let me just say that thank you for the, for the vote and I promise to bone up on my procedures, procedural and get the better line on that. So, at this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order and further order and start the discussion about the recommendation that the staff is putting forward.
So, Mr. Chair, the first thing, the next thing we need to do is call for any abstentions, objections to jurisdiction.
Okay, are there any, anyone present with any objections regarding jurisdiction or any conflicts that might have arisen? In any, what's the Latin term?
Experte.
Experte. Any expertise.
Actually, experte doesn't apply in legislative.
This is not, and not judicial, yeah, yeah. So, okay, if there are any, I'm hearing no objections, so let's go ahead and move on and I will turn it over to staff for the presentation.
Robin, can you pull up the PowerPoint, please? Someone have their radio on in the background?
I wonder if that's mine. Let me see. I didn't even pay attention. I have my office here.
Thank you very much.
Unmute myself first, okay. Um. Are you able to see my desktop right now?
No, it's, it's white.
Okay, let me try one more time. For some reason, it doesn't want to go to my desktop. Let's see. Try this one. Okay, there we go. I think I got it. Yep. All righty. There we go.
All right. So, Doug Ruck's Community Development Director, so what I will do, the initial part of this is I will enter the entire staff report on all the exhibits and attachments into the public record. So, we are here tonight to address the issue about an amendment to our twenty sixteen transportation system plan to address our riverfront master plan. So, the cases that we have for this are two, there's a comprehensive plan text amendment, which is twenty dash zero 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 two and a development code amendment, which is twenty dash zero 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 two. Next slide, please. You've seen this before and it's like, well, you know, why do we have a transportation system plan? So, the transportation system plan outlines all of our future transportation projects and it has, as the slide indicates, our programs and our policies. This addresses multimodal transportation, so it's, it's about the roads, it's about the sidewalks, about the trails, and it's about transit and actually in the TSP, there's some other elements because we have an airport. So, there's an airport component in that plan. And there's also a transit component in the plan. It's important to note that we adopted the current version of the transportation system plan in twenty sixteen. As the community continues to grow, there will be additional transportation needs, we'll have additional job growth that will occur. The transportation system plan is done over a twenty-year period. We are currently kind of four years into that twenty-year horizon with this particular amendment. The final bullet on this particular slide is that the transportation system in Newburgh consists of local streets that are under jurisdiction of the city, but it also includes roadways that are under jurisdiction of Yamhill County. And Yamhill County has their own transportation system plan. And then, of course, we have our state highways with Highway ninety-nine, two nineteen, two forty, and the most recent one with Highway eighteen, which is the Newburgh Dundee bypass. And so, there's coordination efforts on transportation improvements that have to occur with those other agencies. Next slide. Why are we updating this plan? So, in September of twenty nineteen, city council adopted the riverfront master plan. We received a grant from the Oregon Department of Transportation to the Transportation Growth Management Program to do that particular plan. So, that plan is identified as a guiding document for redevelopment of the riverfront area, which consists of about four hundred and sixty acres of land, which is both residential, commercial, industrial, and park and open space areas. In that master plan, it was identified for some new transportation networks. Some of those will directly apply to the transportation system plan. But we also have sidewalks, trails, and different street projects, and we'll get into a little bit more of the details of those. In the transportation system plan, we basically have two categories. Those that are identified as likely funded projects and those that are identified as aspirational projects. I know that was a very large packet that went through, but if you go, if you took the time to read through that particular document, there's things that we can afford over our twenty-year horizon. And there are things that are opportunities, they may be beyond the twenty-year horizon, or there may be funding sources that come up that could advance some aspirational projects into the likely funded. Next slide, please. So, this is a graphic of the riverfront master plan area. So, again, it's about four hundred and sixty acres, so the northern portion of the study area is Ninth Street, basically going from Shahealem Creek to Wynewski. The southern is, of course, the Willamette River. On our west side, we're just a little bit to the west of Wynewski Street, based on some ownership of the mill site. And then, that's the east, the west side is Shahealem Creek. I'd also like to note that tonight, we have with us Brett Music, our senior engineer, and Matt Bell, who's a senior planner with Kittleson and Associates, who is our consultant, who worked with us in order to do this amendment for the transportation system plan. So, they will be available for questions if you have them. Next slide. So, through this process, and we've given you a number of briefings, we did a joint work session with city council, we've given, I've given you briefings as we've gone through this process of this particular update. So, one of the first pieces is we have in the transportation system plan, a freight route map. And with the riverfront master plan, there are some modifications to that freight map. So, freight used to be able to go down or freight route was identified on Eleventh Street between Wynewski and River Street. And so, we are removing that and that's a piece that reflects the desire that came out of the riverfront master plan. And then, we had a freight route that went south of Eleventh Street, basically down to Fourteenth. And again, as part of the riverfront master plan, we are proposing to modify that and delete that segment. Those freight routes worked when the mill was in operation. And as many of you know, the mill has been sold. And if you've driven by lately, you can see that it's in process of being dismantled. Back in twenty sixteen, we did not identify a freight route out Wynewski Road, basically south of the bypass out to Highway two nineteen. So, we are proposing to modify the map to show that route. That's important because the main route into the mill site will be on Wynewski Road as that property redevelops. Next slide. And so, this is the graphic, a portion of the graphics is in the southern part of the city that shows those freight routes. And so, you can see Wynewski over on the left side of the screen, it goes from the bypass out to Highway two nineteen, because we do have a new state highway. And in our municipal code, it says that all state highways are freight routes. We made sure that we identified that as well. And then, up towards the north, you can see that we have freight routes along First Street and Hancock and ninety-nine W. There are some others, Highway two nineteen is a freight route all the way up to the northern part of the city and then Highway two forty out to the western edge of the city. Next slide. Um. So, as we went through this process, we were doing an addendum to the twenty sixteen transportation system plan. So, the text that you see here that is in, in black are existing projects that are within the riverfront area that are in our existing transportation system plan. So, we have an extension of Blaine Street, and so that will continue and remain, it gives you the project number, it gives you the categorization of that, which is an aspirational project, and then it's an existing, which means it's already in our transportation system plan. We've got an extension of Rogers Landing Road. We've got improvements to South River Street, and that's from First to the bypass. We have an aspirational project, another component piece of Rogers Landing Road. And then, we've got Wynewski Street from River Street down to Eleventh, which is, that's not, those are not new streets, but there are improvements to those streets that need to occur. As part of this addendum, we've identified from the bypass south to Rogers Landing Road, there is some additional improvement. So, there's a different roadway cross-section for that portion, which is different than the roadway cross-section north of the bypass. South College Street has some additional improvements that were not identified in twenty sixteen. And then, Wynewski Road. And so, I should say here, at this juncture, is that we inadvertently omitted Wynewski from the bypass out to Highway two nineteen when we were going through the analysis. And so, this is a piece that will be added into the TSP and it'll amend table one that's in that document and we'll be getting a new map that will be coming out to, to show those Wynewski Road improvements. Those improvements, we're working on the cost estimates of those right now, but they're going to be in the range of about three point four to three point seven million dollars roughly, but it will be an aspirational project. Next slide. So, then, this is a map that shows street improvement projects, and this is one that will, again, get modified because we'll have to show Wynewski Road from the bypass out to Highway two nineteen. So, this is just a visual of the text that I had on the previous slide. And this will end up on page eighty-five of the transportation system plan with that modification. Next slide. Intersection improvements. And so, when we did the, the riverfront master plan, we had to do what's called a transportation planning rule analysis to look at the level of development, both residential, commercial, and industrial that would occur in the riverfront area. And through that analysis, we identified that there needed to be a traffic signal at, at Blaine Street in Hancock and Blaine Street and First Street. And so, we've identified those as two new projects that are aspirational and they will be new. We have rail crossing improvements at South College and River Street. As develop, redevelopment occurs when that area or new development occurs, there are federal railway requirements and certain volume thresholds will be exceeded. And both of those rail crossings will need to be signalized. So, that means they'll have the gate arms and the signal boxes and so forth, protect vehicles and pedestrians that would be crossing that rail line. The next project at the intersection is at South River Street, Fourteenth and Rogers Landing. That intersection will need to be redesigned in the future. As you go down there now, you kind of got a three-way intersection. But if you envision that there would be a road that would extend to the east of River Street and go over to Dog Ridge Road, that's going to create a configuration of some kind of four-way or some hybrid four, four-way intersection. So, we've identified that as an area that needs to be studied and we would need to coordinate that with the owner of the new mill property. Next slide. And so, this identifies the locations of those intersections. So, again, you have Blaine and Hancock first and, and Blaine. And then, you have the rail crossing on College Street. You have the rail crossing at River Street, and then you have the intersection at South River and East Fourteenth Street. Next slide. Walking projects. So, what's identified in the riverfront plan is we've got Ninth Street, Fourteenth Street, Eleventh Street, and then this is the trail extension, and then South College. The new projects that would be in the TSP would be the Esplanade Walkway. So, that generally goes from the cul-de-sac on northeast waterfront and extends to the east to the waterline bridge. And then, there's the future feasibility study for the trolley. And the trolley would run as we envision, maybe the first phase of that is from downtown to the riverfront. And then, eventually, that trolley may operate all the way out to the Allison Inn. Next slide. And so, this is the graphic, again, that shows those walking projects. And so, you can see P eight, nine, and twelve, and my screen is small enough, my glasses and my eyes are old, but then you can. But then you can see the green up the top of the bluff, which represent where the Esplanade would go. And so this would end up as page 87 in the in Transportation System Plan. Next slide. Bike projects. And so again, this is the ones where are currently in the plan. So Blaine Street, River Street, Wynewski, Ninth Street, 11th. The new projects would be South River, south of the bypass, which is a multimodal. So as part of the development of the bypass, there's a bypass trail that eventually would go from up near Rex Hill all the way to Dundee. Portions of that trail have already been developed along 11th Street and Weatherly Way. So on the South River Street, we needed to integrate in that bypass trail to come down River Street and then turn and cross river and go along East 14th Street. And then we have the riding projects, which are basically along South College Street as that roadway between Ninth Street and 14th Street gets improved in the future. Next slide. And so this is the graphic that represents where those bike and riding. And so college, you can see highlighted in green and River Street that is highlighted in green. Next slide. Development Code Amendments. So chapter 15, 505.030. We need to make changes to subsection G, which is our street width and design standards, which is the motor vehicle travel lanes, our bike lanes, our parking lanes and our sidewalks. And so Brett worked to identify where those changes needed to occur within the development code to implement the transportation system plan. Next slide. Findings. So in your staff report, we had to evaluate the statewide planning goals. And we've done that. I won't go through the details because there's a lot of words in there. We did get some comments from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon and wanted some additional information added. So we sent out supplemental findings that address the additional growth from housing and the transportation system that would support that additional housing. And so there's a table in there. You can see the, you know, part of the comp plan zone changes we did. There's additional capacity of 70 homes. But there's about 399 new residential units that could be built in the riverfront area as we proceed forward in time. We also addressed the comprehensive plan, the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and its goals and policies. Many of those mirror what's in the statewide planning goals. Then we had to address the Oregon Revised Statutes. And that's chapter 660, Division 11. And so you'll see and in your packet is a robust analysis on each element that needs to be addressed and findings provided that we comply. And staff has concluded that we do that. And then the final section of your findings addresses that this is a type four procedure. It's a legislative hearing process where the public has the opportunity to provide comments and weigh in. I mentioned the issue about Wynewski Road and our oversight in addressing that. And so I would like to make sure we have into the record that the proposal that would be going forward to the city council would include changes to volume one of the TSP, which is on page 56, where we'll have to adjust the number of the aspirational project values to include Wynewski Road. Then in the addendum section of volume one for the riverfront, we will need to update table one to include Wynewski Road. And as I've noted previously, we'll have to modify figure 25 to indicate an aspirational project from the bypass out to Highway 219. And then in volume number two, there is identified as memo number four, which is the recommended projects, and we will need to update that portion of the TSP as well to include the Wynewski Road. My last piece that I need to make sure we have on the record is originally, we had planned this hearing to occur in December of 2020. So when I put together the resolution, I still had the 2020 dates in it. Somehow the clock went by and I didn't realize it was 2021. And so we've made changes to the resolution to make sure that it has the right calendar year identified. The resolution number does stay the same. Next slide. So our recommendation tonight to the planning commission is to adopt Resolution 2021-361 as amended, as I verbally indicated in the presentation. And that would recommend the city council incorporate the 2016 Transportation System Plan Addendum Riverfront Master Plan 2021 into the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and adopt the Development Code Amendments. There was a late email that went out this evening. We received from Robert Suppy regarding some questions about intersections. And these are on Springbrook Road. Staff will respond to those outside of this because we are not going back and redoing the transportation system plan. We're just doing the amendment for the riverfront plan section. That's what the scope of this project was. And Mr. Chair, that is my presentation.
Thank you. At this point, the commissioners, have any questions for staff?
Um, yes, I do. On one of the letters from the Department of State Lands, Jervah Brown, Aquatic Resource Planner. I know that the city has historic record of like our water that we get aquifer, stream repairing corridor overlay, things like that. But when I looked up the flood planes and the legal description, I too believe that it is deficient in supporting wetlands. And I don't know if we need to table that or when, when in the document, it says Doug, that the city doesn't have the money to do a wetlands delineation. And when I looked it up, they're about 24 to $48 an hour. We have a GIS department as well as federal inventory of wetlands already made. And I think it's really important to try and get something for the city on record for wetlands inventory.
Yeah. So Commissioner, on that particular topic, I included in your supplemental packet that the Department of State Lands did a wetland determination on the mill site property. And it's a very broad delineation concept. And so they identified that the ponds may be wetlands and that would need to be evaluated. We know that Hess Creek, which is on the east side of the sites, the wetlands in that area are already within a protected stream corridor designation. We know that on Shahealan Creek, we already have a stream corridor and wetlands are down in the in the creek channel for that. There are some side channels that feed into Shahealan Creek. And we have a stream corridor designations over that. So that already protects those wetlands. We have the Willamette River Greenway. And in the riverfront master plan, that is a stream corridor and it's identified as a park and open space. And then
This evening, we're basically only doing the riverfront master plan, not necessarily a comprehensive. Okay.
We are not. And every, every project that we do, Department of State Lands brings up that they would like the city to do a local wetlands inventory. That inventory will cost tens and tens of thousands of dollars and would have to come right now out of the general fund. And so that competes against all other services that we provide out of the general fund, such as police, library, community development and so forth. We currently approach it on a project by project basis. So we still address the wetlands. So I'll use College Street as an example. There's a side stream. And as College Street gets improved in the future, our engineering department will have to go out and do a wetlands delineation, figure out where that's at, and then evaluate if they're widening that roadway, what impacts would be and what mitigation would need to occur. So it's not that we are obviating our responsibility is that we right now, we're just looking at it on a project by project basis. They're looking at it the entire, you know, 5.9 square miles of the community.
Yeah. Yeah. Cause I realized this is something in the geology department long term that's come up over time. When people started infilling or pulling out water from these areas, with compact soils, collapse, aquifers, do all sorts of things. So it's good that, yeah, I noticed that it is being handled on a project by project basis. But I see nothing for places like wet ponds, vermilion pools, like low lying areas, stuff like that. But that's to be obviously addressed at a later time. And I see that the riverfront master plan did have a delineation of request made. So that satisfies my asking what that was about. And you already answered the other one on the last attachment for from traffic volume accurate from Robert Sophie. So
Suppy.
Suppy. Okay. And thank you for already having that. You're awesome. You always anticipate this stuff, don't you?
I try to.
Well, that was, that was my inquiry. Other than that, that satisfies my question. Okay, so Vice Chair. Any other questions from anybody? We're not alone, are we? Hello?
No, no. Any other questions? This is Commissioner Musa. And I'd just like to on record, I, I understand and support the concern about the wetlands. And but I do see the city's part where they're at, you know, with the funding and how much it would cost for a comprehensive. And that it does seem like the best approach at this time to make sure that it's looked at whenever a project comes up.
Yeah. Yeah, that was what I was wondering regardless of the stream overlay. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? And in C, is there any, is anyone, members of the public present that would like to comment or ask questions?
Yeah. So on this one, Mr. Chair, you would ask if there are any proponents who'd like to speak. And Robin would let us know if there's anybody in the waiting room for that. And then any opponents.
At this time, are there any proponents for the proposal that would like to speak?
No one in the waiting room.
In that case, are there any opponents that would like to speak?
Still no one in their waiting room.
Okay. In that case, moving on, is there anyone that would like to offer a motion on the proposal?
Before we get there, Mr. Chair, first of all, you need to close the public testimony portion of the hearing.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to close the public testimony of the hearing and ask if there was anyone that would like to offer a motion regarding the proposal.
Planning Commissioner Wright, motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-36, including attachments exhibits A, B, C, and D. I won't read them off unless you want me to, Doug.
Commissioner, may I also add as verbally amended at the hearing?
Yes. And as verbally amended at the hearing, the recommendations to city council to incorporate 2016 Transportation System Plan incorporating addendum for the riverfront master plan 2021 into the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and adopt the Development Code Amendments as documented in said attachments and verbally. Does that cover it? All right.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Sherry seconds it.
Hey, having a proposal and a second, yeah, can we move to a vote?
And need to be a roll call vote.
Okay. All right. Robert Sherry.
Yes.
Charles Avon.
Yes.
Gina Morris.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Jeffrey Musa.
Yes.
Thank you.
The proposal as stated passes unanimously. So moving on, it looks like under new business, we have a resolution recommending that the Newburgh City Council accept the Newburgh Housing Needs Analysis, HNA, and Newburgh Housing Strategy.
Mr. Chair, if you will, let me step aside for two minutes, please.
Absolutely.
Jeffrey, you and I have a lot to learn, don't we?
Yes, indeed. Got to get the old procedural book out.
Yeah. The Bible.
I know. I so, I really love this little pamphlet. It's really good. The parliamentary procedure is that what you guys are looking at too?
That's what I've got to find.
I have a copy if you need it. Or I can shoot you photographs too.
Yeah, I could all accept a PDF if you've got one.
Yeah, I have a tendency to look through this a lot.
Okay. Thank you for that momentary break. Robin, if you could pull up the Housing Needs Analysis PowerPoint, please. Okay. So we have provided you a variety of briefings as we've gone through the end of summer into fall on the Housing Needs Analysis. It's always important to remind everyone about the context of this. So in 2019, the city council, the planning commission reviewed and accepted the 2019 Newburgh Housing Needs Analysis and Housing Strategy. Since that time, which was basically August of 2019, there was a new population forecast that came out from Portland State University to ensure that we were using consistent population forecast numbers between our Housing Needs Analysis, which I'll use the acronym of HNA, and our Economic Opportunities Analysis, which is all referenced as our EOA. We applied for a grant to the state of Oregon, to the Department of Land Conservation and Development to update our 2019 HNA based upon the population projection or forecast that came out the end of June of 2020 and our buildable lands inventory. Since 2019, there has been additional development that has occurred. So that was the context of doing this particular update. Next slide, please. So this is our buildable lands inventory. You've seen this map before. It's also important to note, this is not a public hearing. We did a legislative, this is a process of reviewing it and getting a recommendation from the planning commission to go to the city council on accepting the report. So as you can see, we have different color schemes that are identified. So you can see up towards the north end of the map is the Springbrook District with low density residential. You see the lighter brown colors, which are lands that are low density dense residential that are outside of the Springbrook District. You'll see some orange, which is medium density. And you'll see some red, which is the high density designations. So this shows us where we have unconstrained lands. And I'll use the top of the map where north of Mountain View Drive. And you can see kind of through the middle of that, there's the Y, and that's a stream corridor. And that's constrained land. So this looks at land that is vacant and partially vacant. And then deducts out constrained lands. And so this tells us where development could occur. This tells us where development could occur over the course of the next twenty years. And again, an HNA like our Transportation System Plan is developed on a twenty-year horizon. So for this purposes, it's twenty twenty-one through twenty forty-one. Next slide. So this breaks down our acreage by our plan designations, and so you can see. Uh, that we have a hundred and eighty-eight acres, uh, that's buildable in our low-density, sixty-two in medium, ten in our mixed-use. Thirteen in our high-density residential, and then we break it down because we have some specific plan areas, Northwest Riverfront, Springbrook. And Springbrook Oaks, so you can see the totals, and on the right-hand side of this graphic, it breaks it down. Which is buildable acres that are on vacant lands and buildable acres that are on partially vacant land. Um, so that total is that we have six hundred and thirty-one acres of buildable land in our residential categories. In the twenty nineteen HNA, uh, we identified that we had six hundred and seventy-five buildable acres. And so you can see we've had some absorption. Since the last HNA update, and for purposes of this one, we had to have a cutoff date. Of when we were looking at land and when it was committed to being developed, and we did that on October first of twenty twenty. Next slide. So the updates to this, and there are some very prescriptive components of it that we have to go through. And so we had to look at new data related to safe harbors, which is part of the HNA process, and so. Those relate to household size, group quarters, vacancy rates, and our housing mix. And then we also had to look at data related to affordability. And so there we looked at housing sales and rent and median family income, so tables and charts that were in the twenty nineteen were updated. Uh, to reflect that new data information. Next slide. I mentioned beginning, uh, the housing forecast, so that came out on June thirtieth, and so that's the one we needed to use. And we refined our capacity allocation based upon that BLI. And the, and the population, so you've heard me say in the briefings that we've given to you is that our growth. Over the course of the next twenty years is going to be slower than what was forecast in twenty seventeen. Next slide. Group quarters is something that we've talked about in the past, and so Echo Northwest, our consultants. Went back and evaluated all of this, and this was a kind of a conversation point at one of our briefings. Uh, but we had to go back to the university and talk to them about additional housing group quarters. Uh, for students and so forth, and so through those modifications, it resulted that we would have a hundred and five people living in group quarters. The question comes up about, well, what are, what about our retirement facilities? The question has come up about what about Friendsview? Is that considered a group quarters? It is not under the current. Uh, definitions, it may be under the twenty twenty census, that may change. Um, but if you were looking like, uh, if you were looking at a facility like Avamere. That would be considered a group quarters, so the distinction is independent living. Or components of independent living in a retirement facility, then you are outside of the quarter definition. Next slide. Uh, sales price, and this is one that always gets me, it's a little bit startling, so we did a comparison between. Newburgh, McManville, and Sherwood, and you can see the housing prices in Sherwood are higher than they are in Newburgh. And they're a little bit lower than in McManville than they are in Newburgh, because we're in that halo effect of the Portland metro area. But over on the left-hand side of the slide, you can see in twenty eighteen. Uh, our previous HNA document, that median house price was three hundred and forty. So over a two-year period, that price went up to four hundred and thirty thousand. So we continue to talk about housing affordability in Newburgh as many communities in the state do, uh, but this number kind of. Lays it out is that housing prices do continue to increase year over year. Next slide. Uh, this is one that we've shown you before, and this is looking at the median family income, so Newburgh is with. Is within the Portland Metropolitan Statistical Area. And so for a family of four, that median household income is ninety-two thousand one hundred dollars. So with this graph, or a pictorial is trying to identify is what you can afford based upon your income level. So if you are at thirty percent of that median family income of that ninety-two thousand one hundred. You could afford monthly rent of about six hundred and ninety dollars. And that kind of falls into the category of a fast food worker. In the middle of the slide, uh, you can see at eighty percent of median family income, that means you could afford rent of about eighteen forty. Or you could afford a home of two hundred and fifty-eight to two hundred and ninety-five thousand. And as we've talked about before and given the previous slide, try to find a house. Uh, that's within that price range in Newburgh, and of course, at the upper end of this graphic is. A hundred and twenty percent above median family income, which is a hundred and ten thousand five hundred. And there you could afford rent of twenty-seven sixty or a home of about three eighty-seven to four forty-two. And so if the median house price in Newburgh, some are lower, uh, than the four thirty, some are higher. You know, it's even a little bit challenging if you're a hundred and twenty percent of MFI to be able to afford a home in Newburgh. Next slide. This is a graphic looking at, based again on that ninety-two thousand one hundred number. And trying to identify, you know, with that four hundred and thirty thousand dollar home, what income level you would need. And trying to project forward, given current such conditions and situation. What would be the percentage of households who would fall into these different categories of thirty, fifty, eighty? Eighty to one twenty and a hundred percent. Uh, it's, it's not an exact science, but it gives you a pretty good picture about where our households. May fall in their income and affordability over the course of the next twenty years. Next slide. Population forecast. So twenty twenty-one, PSU's forecast says we're going to be twenty-four, twenty-five thousand two oh four. In twenty forty-one, we're going to be at thirty-three thousand one ninety-nine, so about thirty-three thousand two hundred. So that's a change of about a little under eight thousand, it's about a thirty-two percent increase. And it's a one point three nine percent annual average growth rate. Next slide. This one, this particular slide starts to break down in our, our forecast. And so, uh, based upon the data, household size two point six one. Uh, so we start with change in persons, the population, we take out the group quarters, that gives us seventy-eight forty. Take the two point six one, uh, that tells us how many new dwelling units we'd need, a little over three thousand. We have to look at the vacancy rate, which is five point five percent. Uh, which comes to a hundred and sixty-five units, so that tells us that we would need three thousand one hundred and sixty-nine units over that twenty-year period. Which on an annual average would mean about a hundred and fifty-eight units, and so that's both a single-family and multifamily. To accommodate that population growth. Next slide. And here's the mix, uh, we've identified this before is needed new dwellings, thirty-one sixty-nine. In the twenty nineteen HNA, we toggled and did something a little different by the committee, so we had an ad hoc committee. In twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, and we had an ad hoc committee review all this information in twenty twenty. And so what we're looking at in the future is we move forward in time, is that sixty percent of the new housing would be detached, single-family. Eight percent of the housing would be attached, single-family, and thirty-two percent would be. Uh, multifamily, in the twenty nineteen, those numbers showed, uh, twenty-three percent multifamily, six percent attached. And seventy-two percent a single-family, so the policy choice. Was identified in twenty nineteen document to move towards more multifamily housing, which is more affordable than the detached, single-family. Next slide. Uh, we looked at accessory dwelling units and redevelopment, so we modeled, uh, based upon. Past data, we have about twenty accessory dwelling units. Uh, over that twenty-year period, that's about one a year, we had a little bit of an uptick when we changed our regulations, and then it's now flattened off. And out of our downtown improvement plan, we identified a hundred multifamily units in the downtown area. Um, so you can see on the bottom of this slide, that brings our adjusted number to just a little over. Three thousand dwelling units. Again, but if you look at it, almost a little, almost nineteen hundred of those units would be detached, single-family, two hundred and fifty-four would be. Attached, single-family, and nine hundred and fourteen would be multifamily units. Next slide. And this is the allocation, and so we broke this out and looked at the different plan designations. And I won't go through all of the slide, but you can see the breakout for low-density, medium-high, and then those that are in the specific plan areas. What's important to note about these specific plans is we use those plans explicitly because. Example of Northwest says four point nine dwelling units per acre. In the Springbrook Master Plan, it specifically identifies the number of dwelling units that would be developed. In that master plan area, and that's covered by a development agreement. Next slide. Capacity, and I need to move my little icon here. So we went back and looked at our historic densities, and our plan is based upon a gross density. And then you get to net density after you take out, um, you know, your roadways and so forth, and so our historic densities. Load, and the low density is four point eight, seven point six in our medium density, and eighteen point seven in our high-density areas. And as I mentioned, the Northwest Specific Plan has four point nine, and then we use the specific numbers. Out of the Springbrook District Master Plan. And so this table shows you what those capacities would be, and it comes up to a little over thirty-three hundred. Units, uh, in those different designations. Next slide. This, uh, we had to calculate density. And so, uh, in our LDR, again, four point eight, seven point six, and eighteen point seven, four point nine in the Northwest. And then we had to do that density calculation in the Springbrook District. And you can see the low density is at three point eight, the mid-rise is at eighteen point four, and the village residential is twelve point one. So that gives us an overall density of about five point eight, and what this is really telling us. Is that we have a deficiency deficiency in multifamily land. Uh, in order to accommodate our population in the future. Next slide. Land needed for other uses, uh, so this was not in the twenty nineteen, it was a task we knew we needed to do. Which would have required us to go back and make some adjustments into that twenty nineteen document, so this time we, uh. Made the decision to go ahead and, and do those calculations. And so you can see the group quarters we've already talked about, uh, which is on your left-hand side, and then. We had, and we did not do this in twenty nineteen, but implement, it occurs in our residential areas. And so we did those calculations, and you can see those on the right-hand side of your screen. Next slide. So then that gets us down to the land sufficiency comport, uh, component of that, and so. What all of this tells us is we have a surplus of thirty-one acres of low-density residential land. We have a deficiency of thirty-seven acres of medium density and a deficiency of forty-four acres in our high-density. And so I put at the bottom of the slide comparison, so you can see what the numbers looked like compared to the twenty nineteen HNA. Where we had a, a deficit of twenty acres in LDR, twenty-six in MDR, and sixty-two in our high-density residential. Next slide. So these last few slides get to the, the housing strategy component. Um, and so I worked with the consultants, we extended the time horizon out a little bit. So we went to City Council back on November second and took a housing, uh, work program to them. Uh, to look at what should be, be working on over the course of the next five years. And in that program, it included all of the elements that were in the twenty nineteen HNA. In addition to items that were identified by Housing Newburgh Group and other items that have been brought forward with staff. And so we had to recalibrate this a little bit, and so you can see it goes from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, and goes out to twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, and you can see the different things that we're talking about, so conduct us full analysis of land sufficiency, so we're, we're in that process and we're doing that. Uh, in the future, we're looking at, in twenty-one, twenty-two, looking at, um, maximum lot size and minimum density. Uh, expanding cluster development standards, we're in that process now as part of House Bill two thousand and one. Looking at density bonuses, and that's out in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and that's for where we have these stream corridors that. Uh, were brought up in a prior discussion this evening, and right now our regulations don't allow you to fully transfer that density out of those. Uh, natural resource Gulf Five protected areas, and we want to look at what that might. What we might be able to do to modify that in the future. Strategy two duplexes, triplexes, quads, and single-family, uh, we're working on that currently. Uh, again, as part of House Bill two thousand and one, and then, uh, another item on the list was allow tiny and small homes. And so that would be a twenty twenty-one, twenty-two task. Next slide.
Doug. Um, I noticed that we don't have any codes for tiny homes. Off of their wheels, is that going to be considered a, um, underneath a small housing category?
It would be addressed separately. Right now, uh, it's a little bit of a quagmire. The way our code is written is that a tiny home that on wheels is considered an RV. And we have regulations in our municipal code that says you can't live in an RV on the side of your house, and you can only have an RV. Uh, out, you know, parked on the street, um, it has time limitations on it, and so. We've had conversations with individuals in the community about modifying those regulations so that you could have a tiny home. Uh, something of several hundred square feet, uh, that could potentially be with wheels or without wheels. Right now, if you wanted to have a tiny home on wheels, we say you have to put a foundation underneath it, and you have to take the wheels off. Uh, so that's what that program would look at, how we would revise our current regulations to allow that housing type.
And would that also be considered underneath the ADU then, if you had it on your property?
Yeah, well, I can't answer that yet until we go through that evaluation and figure out how tiny homes might relate to accessory dwelling units.
Ah, another, another chapter.
Yeah, everything leads to something else.
You know.
The vertical housing tax abatement, we're currently working on that. Multifamily housing property tax abatement program, that's something identified in twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, urban renewal districts, we're currently in that process and doing that evaluation. Construction excise tax, the City Council adopted that ordinance on November sixteenth. Uh, that went into effect on December sixteenth, and we started the implementation on January second. Uh, reduced and waived building fees. And SDCs, uh, we have an up, an upcoming conversation about SDCs. Urban renewal might be a way to help reduce costs for building fees and SDCs as well, so we kind of identified this as. Two different horizons, kind of like a first step and look at it, and then a future step and look at it. And then it came out of the, uh, the analysis was looking at a general obligation bond is another possibility. Next slide. So. Uh, I have sent out to you comments that we have received. Since the ad hoc Housing Needs Analysis Committee met and formulated their recommendation. And so I think I'll probably just briefly touch on those, and so we received comments from friends of Yamhill County. And Thousand Friends, and one of those related to density. And we believe that the issue they raised, that information is already within the Housing Needs Analysis, it's specifically on pages eighty-five through eighty-six. Under exhibit sixty-two, and so what I think we need to probably do is put a footnote or a reference. On the page that they cited that takes you to page eighty-five and eighty-six and exhibit sixty-two to answer that question. Under the housing mix, uh, which was identified in their comments. This gets to the issue of the regional housing needs analysis, and so that's something that is new. And, uh, these are two separate processes. And so we are following the administrative rule and statutes that apply to creating a housing needs analysis. The regional housing needs analysis was a report. The regional housing needs analysis was a report, and these are my words, that was prepared, it was required, it was repaired, it was brought forward to DLCD and to the commission. But there aren't any administrative rules to administer at this point in time. And it would be a blending of two different methodologies, which has not been done in this state. And my preference is is that Newburgh does not want to be the guinea pig on trying to blend two different programs that have not been fully tested. I think it's also important to note in the regional housing needs analysis, there's an appendix D, which has their recommended results. And so kind of think of it as the, the regional housing needs analysis, sort of like in its beta stage and being evaluated. Another comment came up about the public and exempt. And in conversations with my consultant team in the work that they've done around the state is that the methodology we've used has been tried and tested around the state. The the issue on the exempt component is that there's nothing in the process of the administrative rules that we have to go out and and survey churches and so forth. And so we, we use the approach that has been used around the state and that has been accepted around the state. So we believe we don't need to do anything with that particular aspect. I think there may be some misunderstanding in relation to the Springbrook comment.
Yeah, cuz.
Because again, I, and I mentioned through the presentation is that we use the exact numbers that are in the master plan. And so that is an adopted document, it's in our comprehensive plan. We have a development agreement that binds the development of that property to those numbers. And the utilization of master plans and other housing needs analysis, again, is a methodology that has been accepted. House Bill two thousand and one was another comment that was made and that we should consider House Bill two thousand and one as relates to the duplex component of that. And we talked to our ad hoc committee about that. And it is a new administrative rule. But Newburgh does not have to comply with that rule until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty one. And so we don't know what the answers are to that. Yes, there is a provision within that administrative rule that makes an assumption of not more than three percent of your housing growth would occur in duplexes, but that doesn't mean the market would necessarily respond. So my opinion on that one is that no, we should not be looking at House Bill two thousand and one regarding duplexes as part of this HNA. That would come at a future update of the housing needs analysis, which that program has now changed and we have to do it every eight years. We could do it sooner than that, but we would be obligated to do it every eight years. The next set of comments that came were from Mr. Harris. And again, this is relating to kind of the regional housing needs analysis component of that. And it's not that I disagree that with our existing population, we have some deficiencies in housing. But again, I go back to my comments I made earlier, it's a, it's a different system that's not part of the housing needs analysis process that the city had gone through, that our consultants have worked with us on and have used in multiple communities across the state of Oregon. So with that, staff's recommendation would be to adopt resolution twenty twenty one, three sixty three, recommending that city council accept the house, Newburgh Housing Needs Analysis and the Newburgh Housing Strategy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you. At this point, do any more questions from commissioners?
Not on this part.
Anyone else? Well, hearing none. And is this was not a public, do I need to open for a public comment?
If we have anybody that's in the waiting room that would like to make comments, then yes, I would say that we should do that.
Absolutely. Is there any proponents in the waiting room that would like to speak?
No proponents in the waiting room.
Are there any opponents in the waiting room?
No opponents in the waiting room.
At this point, then there is no public comment and no further questions from commissioners. Do we have a recommendation to move on?
Yes, planning commissioner recommend right recommendation for resolution twenty twenty one dash three six three recommends that the Newburgh City Council accept the Newburgh Housing Needs Analysis and Newburgh Housing Strategy, including attachments, exhibit A and exhibit B.
Okay, is there a second?
Commissioner Sherry, seconds.
At this point, we have a recommendation to pass the motion and we have a second. Can we take a vote?
Okay, Robert Sherry?
Yes.
Charles Avon?
Yes.
Gina Morris?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Jeffrey Musall?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the resolution passes. So moving on, we have another resolution for city council, this one recommending that city council accept the Newburgh Public Semi Public Land Need Analysis for twenty twenty one through twenty forty one. For the staff?
Robin, could you pull up the PowerPoint, please? So as I mentioned in the housing needs analysis document, we had not done a public semi-public land need determination, again, based upon the new population forecast that came out at the end of June of, of twenty twenty. So as kind of the companion piece to the HNA, we engaged Echo Northwest to assist us in doing that particular analysis. This is something that we did not do in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, as I mentioned before, but we knew it's something that we needed to do. So next slide. So estimating our land need. And in the briefings that we've provided to the planning commission, we did an internal evaluation and discussion with staff about the, the city's needs for land in the future. And so this table breaks it out for public works, booster pump stations, two of them, we need about two acres, water treatment plant expansion, six acres, water booster pump stations, an acre, water booster pump station, the second one, two acres, and then a regional water quality facility. And then we identified within our urban growth boundary where those particular facilities would go. So a lot of this goes back to looking at our functional plans for water sewer storm and the infrastructure we're going to need to support development in the future. We had a conversation with our library director about future land needs for the library and that came out to what point two acres. City Hall, again, growing population, we will need to be able to service that. That was about point four acres. And then downtown parking lots and three, and so this comes out of the downtown improvement plan. So that was fifteen point four acres of land for cities' needs in the future. Next slide. Then we talked with Yamhill County and specifically the transit area or transit agency. And they had two identified needs. One was about two acres for future facilities. And so they needed to include space for parking buses. And then one would be for a park and ride lot in the downtown area. We are assuming will be in the downtown area based on prior discussions we've had with them. And then we looked at the bypass and had conversations with the Oregon Department of Transportation. So this relates to phase two. The land that's needed for phase one has already been acquired. And of course, phase one, the bypass has been constructed. But phase two, they've been going through the process of acquiring land for that, both inside our urban growth boundary and outside our urban growth boundary. So we did a calculation and looked at that over this twenty year period. And there's about eleven point one acres of land that's within our urban growth boundary that would still need to be acquired for phase two of the bypass. And that's really out in our southeast quadrant of Newburgh. Next slide. So parks. So Shaheilum Park and Recreation District has their parks master plan within our comprehensive plan. We mirrored that on what park needs are, and those are based upon acres per type, acres needed per thousand population based on type of park. And so on the left hand side of this slide, you can see that that level of service is about two and a half acres per thousand for neighborhood parks and between five and eight acres for community parks. And we went with the lower end on that five acres. And so the, on your right hand side, it says that based upon the population growth, what we've already talked about in the housing needs analysis is that there would be a need for an additional sixty acres of neighborhood and community parks within the community. Oh, and.
Doug? Planning Commissioner Wright, is this based on the refined findings of population?
Yes, it's based upon the June twenty, June thirtieth, twenty twenty population forecast. And then looking at that number, what that population would be in twenty forty one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide. So then we had a conversation with Newburgh Public Schools to see if they had any additional land needs over that twenty year planning horizon. And they indicated they did not. Next slide. And then we looked at public and semi-public. And again, this is based upon thousand per population. So we looked back at what we have for public and semi-public uses and then projected that forward. And so you can see in this particular table is there's a need for twenty eight additional acres of land for churches and then other public and semi-public uses in residential. And there is some in commercial and in some industrial. I mean, we do have some churches in commercial industrial land, but there was a need for thirty two acres of land. Next slide. So what did that leave us for a conclusion? So based upon our population forecast for twenty forty one is we have twenty eight and a half acres for municipal services, and that's basically city, county and state for parks at sixty acres and for these semi-public uses thirty two. So that comes to a total of a hundred and twenty point five. Now, these numbers have been included in the housing needs analysis. And these numbers are also where applicable are being included in our economic opportunities analysis as it relates to commercial and industrial land. Next slide. So the recommendation on this one is to adopt resolution number twenty twenty one dash three sixty four recommending city council accept the Newburgh Public Semi Public Land Need twenty twenty one to twenty forty one. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Doug. That one was some short and sweet. So any questions from commissioners?
That was my only one was to make sure it was based on the refined public population. That was the only question I had as commissioner.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, are there any? Anyone wishing to make a public comment? Supporting the resolution?
There is no one in the waiting room.
Is there anyone in opposition?
No, sir.
Okay, with no public comment input and no further commissioner questions. Would someone like to propose handling the resolution?
Yes, planning commissioner Wright, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash three six four with exhibit A, Newburgh Public and Semi Public Man Land Needs twenty twenty one to twenty forty one analysis.
Okay, we have a proposal to adopt. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Morris, I second that.
Okay. So proposed and so seconded, and can we take a vote at this time?
Okay, Robert Sherry?
Yes.
Charles Avon?
Yes.
Gina Morris?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
And Jeffrey Musall?
Yes. The resolution passed as proposed. So moving on. It looks like we have a workshop on middle housing. Is the, is that coming from staff?
The, and so on the middle housing component of this, we, I included a memo in your packet. And so we've had three meetings of the ad hoc committee for this. One was an orientation and then they've had two meetings when they started to dive in to House Bill two thousand and one related to middle housing duplexes, triplexes, quads, clusters and town homes. I think the real update on this piece of it is that we did a community open house. And we held that on December fifteenth. We did not have a large attendance for that virtual online open house. But we also did a community survey and that survey closed on Monday at five o'clock. And we received about two hundred comments.
Wow.
From that survey. So we feel pretty good about that. So we didn't have a lot of people join us virtually, but we did have a lot of people who spent the time at home being safe and providing us input. We're cataloging all that and I actually, we put together with our consultant team and that packet went out to that ad hoc committee today. And so they have a meeting next Wednesday and we're going to be reviewing the results of the survey and the comments that we received. And we'll also be starting to talk about the standards that we need to adopt. And so we're focusing first on duplexes, because that's the one we have to comply with by June thirtieth of twenty twenty one. But we're also going to start the conversation of talking about some design standards for the other middle housing that the administrative rule allows. So I will continue to give you brief updates on that project on a monthly basis as we move forward. We will be in a position of having some public hearings coming up in the spring. And those will be, that hearing will be legislated in nature. But we'll also have to do a thing called measure fifty six notice. So that means anybody with low density, medium density, high density, residential professional and airport residential, we have to notify about the proposed changes regarding duplex units within Newburgh. So that's what I have on that one, Mr. Chair.
Oh, thank you. So at this point, are there any further items from staff?
You have in your packet, your forward looking calendar of items. And of course, every time I do one of these, then things shift and change. And so this may have gone out a week ago, but it's already been modified. You will have a legislative hearing on your, the population forecast. And so we've talked a lot about that tonight, and so we need to integrate that into our comp plan and I'll give you another briefing on middle housing. What has changed in March is the stormwater master plan is going to move out in time, but we will be doing the water, the wastewater and then our recommendation on our economic opportunities analysis. So you will get another update looking forward in twenty twenty one about what cases and activities will be coming in front of you.
Wonderful.
Outstanding. Okay, any items from commissioners?
None here.
Okay, well, I want to thank everyone for attending and thank you for bearing with me. I'll get my parliamentary procedures a bit more ironed out. And we'll go from there. And we'll go from there. So at this time, if there's nothing further, I'd like to adjourn the January 14th, 2021 meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission.
And Charles, you made it through your first meeting. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a, have a good weekend and stay safe.
Thank you all and good night.